No, it's, um... I'm telling you, we've looked into each other's kitchen windows for over twenty years and I can't, I can't imagine. I, I just, um... Some medical personnel are there. Um, all decked out, just went in and out tonight. I didn't, I didn't go over each other. Yeah, no.
Well, she knocked it up. I've been thinking about it all night.
I can't be invisible, yeah, it, um... I was on a conference call then. It gets down.
It's very interesting.
Do you also want to say anything? We need, I think, just a couple of minutes. Alright. Thank you guys for waiting. We had a non-public meeting with this man in the camera. So... We'll call this meeting to order at seven o'clock, um, just as a usual opening. Um, for the viewers at home, just please state who you are and what your, um, and then you can discuss. If, uh, if you're sitting like not in the front area here, there's a post-it over here that's in the view of the camera so people can see it. Okay, first order of business, sixty-five Main Street. You're up.
Well, we sent you a word.
Uh, yeah, we got it last week. So, um, the proposal, um, as I read it, and, um, I think as we've spoken before, was, um, in lieu of, um, uh, basically selling the building to the water department, if water departments for ten years would waive water fees for the town and for the fire department, is that correct? For the town hall building and the fire department?
Uh, we didn't include the fire department.
Oh. How much was the fire department? I thought, I thought between the town and the, and the fire department was like fourteen thousand a year.
Just, just, just this building.
So we, well, how much is this building?
Fourteen thousand, is it?
I thought it was eleven thousand in the fire department, no?
Twelve, not twelve, twelve thousand.
They said twelve?
Yeah, twelve thousand, this is still, this is, we didn't mention it, like, or...
How much is the fire department? I only asked because, you know, it's town property and, so, hold on one second, let me, uh, let me see. General government buildings, water and sewer, yeah, it's, uh, eleven thousand dollars. That's what I have on our budget line. Uh, and we're at ten thousand five hundred sixty-nine as of basically this month.
I don't have a fire department taken off.
Um, no, I was, my assumption was, because I think on the fire department, and again, maybe I, the fire department, water and sewer was thirty-five hundred. So my assumption was is that we had talked about fourteen thousand a year approximate value. I was assuming that you were talking about the fire department plus the town hall, which equals about fourteen thousand a year. That was the number that we had kicked around.
And they included, but the whole total came out at a hundred and forty thousand.
Correct.
Wait, I, you never mentioned fourteen, you never mentioned the fire department?
Well, a hundred and forty thousand over ten years is fourteen thousand a year.
True.
And that's why I was equating the fourteen thousand with town hall and the fire department, because that's about fourteen thousand a year. That, that's why I'm asking that. I, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to change the deal, I'm trying to make sure the deal now is not only a hundred and ten thousand because the town hall is only eleven thousand a year.
Yeah. Well, let's go back, is that, we can hammer out the details, but is that the basic idea?
Yeah, I think essentially that, for me, I don't have, again, as we talked about before, I think that more or less makes sense. We're getting basically what we bought the building for. You know, it's obviously, it's at a discount to current, current market value.
But there's another proposal. Did, did, did they get that other, any other proposal?
The proposal we got was in lieu of the water built for town.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah.
Not, you're not, you know, you wrote this one, where we would sell it to you for a dollar?
So, you know?
Which is alright. Um, from November ten, um, that you, that we would sell the building to you at seventy-five Main Street for a dollar with a stipulation that the ownership of the building, this is the proposal you're talking about, right?
That's what I was talking about. That's another one we kicked around.
So do you have two proposals now, or just this one?
No, uh, what we're thinking, is that proposal, two of us for a dollar. Still, it just, it just becomes part of the water department for ten years. And nor yet ten years, correct, well, the, you, the town hall does not pay for the water.
Right.
And then later ten years, you know, goes back to the town or stays to the water department, or something like that.
Well, I, I, again, I had anticipated this being basically the, the ten-year deal that we had discussed last time. At a hundred and forty thousand value, assuming it was fourteen thousand, and again, that's why looking at the numbers for this year, eleven five for this building, a ten five for this building, and thirty-five hundred for the fire department equals the fourteen thousand. So, if that makes sense, I, I'm comfortable with proposing that as a warrant article.
There's another idea, say to, uh, over ten years, a hundred and ten thousand, and then give the town this building back.
I'm not sure the town wants the building.
Say to the town. Not, not, it's the water and sewer, okay, water and sewer, that's perfect.
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, because in all honesty, it's real estate. I don't know that the town has a purpose for it. If it comes back to us, we're now responsible for maintaining it, which is expensive in itself, and we don't get property taxes on it, etc., etc. So, I, I...
No, I think what they were, it, there's a stipulation in here that the building would come back to us if the village district disbands. That, is that what you're saying? Not at the end of the ten years, that it would come back to us, but that it would come back to us if the village district disbands?
Yeah, right. That's, that's kind of the, um, the, the, hopefully it does not happen clause of what we're talking about. But if, if what you're asking for in the warrant article is this type of structure, I would be comfortable supporting that. As, in lieu of the fourteen thousand between the fire and, and the town hall in, for ten years, obviously in the eleventh year we'll keep paying. Um, building becomes owned by the water and sewer district, and to Jackie's point, if you end up disbanded at some point in time, it will revert back to the town.
Right. So, would you, you'll be running that warrant article?
Um, I, certainly we can draft it and we'll send you a version and make sure it's kosher. Also, obviously want to have the lawyers look at it. Certainly there'll be a more formal agreement, but we'll conceptually get this into the warrant article for the town.
My warrant article will be full, full fire supported.
Yeah, yeah. Betsy, you okay with that?
I, I know, I am.
Okay, great, well, we anticipate it. She, she got more.
If we made that longer.
Oh, he needs that term, alright. So, okay, so, we'll draft something, I'll circulate it back to you. Uh, hopefully we'll get it on the ballot in March, hopefully play with it at the Liberty session.
The next thing has to get in the ballot, against the end of the contract.
No, I'm talking, oh, understood, well, we can always renew that, right, we can go for less than a year.
Go ahead.
Um, but, you know, the, the Liberty session will be where it has to get through.
The next issue, time of matter, because we have a lot of projects that need, we don't have a lot of time coming down. What about the mon, uh, stimulus funding we asked for?
So, uh, that's actually part of the discussion tonight. Um, uh, one thing in terms of going over the budget numbers, and I haven't, we haven't talked about this yet, but I'm gonna throw out to you what I think makes the most sense, is that given where we are in our budget for this year and the available funds, I would like to cut that check this fiscal year, so it comes under this fiscal year in terms of spending. So, um, our goal might, might be, again, after we talk about this later, is to get you those funds in the next couple of weeks.
Do you have a timeline or a list of other projects that need to be done? I know you had this, about the twenty-five-ish thousand, right, for the wells, for the original one?
Yeah, they're gonna start, they're gonna start, uh, refurbishing the wells Thursday.
Okay, you had another, you had a list of, that was just one piece, there were other projects that you wanted?
There's a couple of valves, a lot of valves.
Right, seven thousand for the valves, twenty-four thousand for the valves, yep.
Has anybody else come in and looked behind?
Yes, we have some from Rhode, um, and then we're looking at, um, one of the things that I've, I've looked at is the premium pay aspect. We don't have to spend all of this right away, um, but, again, from a budget standpoint, it may be better certainly for the taxpayer of this town, if we do that, do those two items on your list this year, uh, I think it'd be better overall. But we're gonna talk about that in a little bit.
Yeah, that's it.
Did you have, I feel like you, you had other proposals for the go-for-money as well though, didn't you?
Excuse me?
You had other proposals for the go-for-money, wasn't there, were there other projects you wanted us to consider under those funds? Besides just this one?
The others, where we, uh, discussed in the office, yeah.
Okay.
There are, there are.
Again, you're on that next fiscal year, this isn't a one and all thing, this is a funds that are around that we need to spend by the end of twenty-twenty-five.
But I will put that list together sooner rather than later. Not a great, thank you.
Anything else, Betsy?
No.
Do you guys have anything else? Alright, I'll, I'll draft something up on the warrant article, it's circulated, I'm excited, I'll get it over to you when we're ready. Thank you. Alright, next up on the agenda, that's a head ton. Chief? Talking about the cruiser, let's spin more of it. We've got a package for everybody. And, yep. But this package is included in the same basic report forward. Uh, I went with the cheapest package for the three cruisers that we brought, something that we discussed last week. Um, as you move forward, um, within the package, the base price is a state bid for local cruisers, which is nine thousand three hundred and nine hundred and sixty. And includes the options that the annual cruises have. That, Cameron, which, um, is very important for the cruisers, we take line spots, especially when you have a couple of engages and actually a heated room, uh, merits which, uh...
Uh, is this big enough water to keep it here?
I'm sorry, um, so basically, um, the price for cruisers, thirty-two thousand and sixty. What that does not include is the extended warranty. Um, I have not received those figures because there are five or six different options to what is being offered. What I'm being told by the filing board who receive the state bid is extended warranty, um, there's a couple of different variations that you can get. You can get a five year seventy-five, you can get a five year a hundred. I need to look at, initially, how long we will run the frontline cruisers and how many miles we put on before I make a determination on if, and if the extended warranty makes sense for us, and what option makes sense to go forward. Uh, that being said, these cruisers, uh, they did some issues with them, this means transmission issues. Uh, the market just took one of their failure cars out of service today for a transmission issue. Uh, water pumps are an issue, uh, with some of these, including one of the current cars that we have now, this is our number two car, which has forty-four thousand miles on it. Luckily, I got them to cover the car on the warranty. It's what's going to the front forward next week for air, for the water pump, for these four cruisers, it requires them to call the engine to replace the water pump. So, we will be...
Nice to find.
And why are you finding?
There's not many options out there.
Okay, that's good, I...
Uh, many options here. Maybe I'm still on the street right now. Um, also in this proposal is, um, from Motorola for a new cruiser radio, which is forty-three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I did speak to Jeff Feenster, um, on roots management, and looked at what funds they have, and do believe that that would fit the criteria. Alright, number three cruiser, the radio is old, uh, it has a hard time lighting up at night. It doesn't make sense using the radio that is fifteen, twenty years old for the, to operate the car. You just wanna, it's not a warranty, if you wanna put money into it, and if we can get the funds out of, uh, roots management, it makes, in my opinion, it makes sense taking those funds if we can use that, now that the price of what we have to come up with. Um, notice, uh, the outfit of cruiser, um, for a new radar, you need to go with a new radar because the one in car three right now is very old. We don't have any parts working on, I am finding, and remote control for it on eBay the other day. Um, that's another thing, is you don't wanna put a radar that's fifteen, twenty years old into a regular car. This is a one-time fee, this will last, as according for the next ten, fifteen years, technology does change, but in my opinion, if we're gonna outfit a new car, do it right, it's gonna save you money in the long run. You, you're, out of line on this equipment and maintenance, will not be affected by all these stuff, add a warranty, a brand-new, it'll last you, like I said, ten, fifteen years. Um, if we take the funds, I listen, uh, first again, up for the radio, the cost of the cruiser, as well as the outfitting of the cruiser brings it up to above fifty thousand dollars. Uh, I have about twenty-three thousand in the detail river account. Um, my recommendation is, uh, have all money in that account as we move forward. However, these prices will be going up ten to twelve percent for the Motorola radio as January first, and six to ten percent on that seventeen thousand dollars, uh, January first. So, what I would like to do, if possible, if this is approved, is, uh, cruiser rate will not go up because of the state bid that's locked in. Uh, but as for the seventeen thousand dollars, I can take that out of my detail river account, I can lock that price in so that price doesn't go up six to seven percent in January first. And as for the radio, I'd like to lock that in, because that's going up ten to twelve percent in January first. So that's why I push that price up low, five thousand dollars. And I could work with roots management, we gotta find that, if we're, we have a E O C training tomorrow, I'll see Tom, I'll see Jeff, and that's something that I haven't talked to Tom directly about this, but Jeff pretty much told me, you have nothing to worry about. Yeah, uh, but obviously it's up to you, so, of course, well, uh, it makes sense on the radio, uh, you know, roots management, that's typically what we utilize them for is, is this type of purchase. And given the line item right now, I don't anticipate a problem, I would just suggest we have that conversation with Tom and, and Jeff. Um, yeah, I, I think this plan is, makes sense, the detail account for the outfit, and then what we'd probably end up doing is adjusting cover funds so that you guys can get it done, you know, you know, you guys can commit to it. Uh, and then, you know, I, I don't know when you would end up taking delivery, but as, as long as we encumber the funds, you can take it in January, whenever, honestly, we come out of this cruiser, it's a nice one. Just with, I talked to the local choosing the market. I understand, sir. Um, they can give you the fan number, by at least obviously you'll get the car, they give you... If it's in Singapore? We could pay for it, and if you, if it was easy to cut a check out of this year's budget, it's up to you. Encumbering the funds is fine, because, again, that's legally what we're able to do. So, un, unless, you know, if, we can kind of check for a deposit, they require a deposit, I'd probably prefer to do that than hand over all the money and not the car. Uh, I think we'll take our block, I will order and, or with, like I said, if they wanted deposit, we'll cut a check for a deposit, that's not a problem. And we'll encumber whatever is necessary on the rest. Um, we have one more meeting at the end of this month, so if you just let us know in terms of these three items, how you would deal with it over the next couple of weeks, and then whatever is required, we'll encumber at the last meeting of the year.
I have a question for you. You mentioned at the last meeting about not needing for a hybrid, is this the hybrid or is it not?
Hybrid is three thousand dollars more, I checked with local mechanics, and hybrid isn't new. Um, they recommended not opening the hybrid, just because, boy, it's hardly advantageous with their water pumps, as well as their transmissions, and they felt that it could be... They recommend waiting for year two because the hybrid is fairly new, and usually when you, um, leave them, so, this box will be fixed. So, there's two reasons I didn't know it, price was three thousand dollars higher, and two, I don't wanna be damned with potential, but we can't afford to have a cruiser now, a frontline cruiser.
I wasn't sure if that would, you know, on the backside, take out some of that maintenance for the, um, for the transmission.
Uh, the gas prices potentially, but I don't think they've been long enough, there's not enough data out there from my car, the symbol of apartments to have them. They haven't been long, run, around long enough, excuse me, to say how much of the savings that we would have at our level of our size now. Any other questions?
Would you have to figure in the cost of charging these vehicles?
Those hybrids are not, uh, charging, meaning they don't have to plug in, it's just they don't have, what basically does is...
They charge on the battery?
Yeah, exactly. It starts running, um, you know, so, at some point, maybe in about four years, we'll run a cruiser, maybe we'll look at it, and who knows who has the state bid, and it might be...
Yeah, it's changing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Chief. Uh, alright, um, Brian is...
You have a couple things?
I do have a couple ones on... Oh, oh, go ahead, that's my other one. I have to hear approval, you can talk to Sue about implementing the four thirty-seven plan, I'm not sure if you guys know what that is. Um, it's a non-qualified tax advantage, a deferred compensation retirement plan, uh, for government employees, so every employee here in the town, uh, town hall lives there to the way it was part, it's no cost to town, you know, just need a sign-off for a solicitor, that's true, and that. Other municipalities are offering that, um, Strad, Rye, Boysham, Hampton, I had an agreement, um, that there's no tax, there's nothing, it's gonna cost the town to set up, there's no magic funds. The officer, if he or she chooses to go with this, they determine they want a center that they check, uh, pre or post-tax taken, now, it's not like an IRA. Yeah. But what is good is they have to have the way to traditional age of fifty-nine and seventy, whatever, it's not seven and a half, the maintenance not drawn from that upon separation from the town, New Fields, or upon retirement. In my opinion, it's only changed with the state retirement system, I wish I knew about this twenty-something years ago, I found out about three, four years ago, and implemented in Greenland, and it worked quite well, so just need approval for that, um, person I deal with, um, from personal, um, personal financial strategies in Southampton is willing to come over and sit down with Don and set up the, the paperwork, because it is pretty intensive to set up. Okay. But at no cost, you'll come over and sit down with Don and set that up.
Sue, you're telling me that this will enable officers to access, in essence, their retirement money?
No, this is an IRA for...
It's an IRA for government employees.
So, anybody in the fire department, if they're paid at one time, uh, we need government employees at one time, anybody in the town hall, full of our time, police department, full of our time. Um, if you don't mind, uh, I, I'd just like to just do a little homework on, but I, I've seen no reason why we wouldn't.
Okay, so by the next one meeting?
Yeah, that's fine, I assume you guys want to, you know, look at four, five, seven. I, I use some literature, so I can leave it close to... Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, exactly, that'd be perfect. Thank you. Anything else? Just the detail rate. Detail rate, um, okay, detail rate, uh, we did a survey that I installed to you during my hiring process, there is a survey going around, not quite complete yet, but, uh, detail rate here in New Fields happens, been updated in about three or four years, uh, gas prices have gone pretty good. Our cruiser rate, we charge for vendor detail, in my opinion, it's not covering maintenance, both the cruisers and the gas. Uh, retirement rate's about thirty-three point eight-eight, not every employee pays retirement for the details, I think two of us do, besides the valley and myself. Uh, I'm hoping to raise that rate to come in competitive with the other departments around here, as well as it helps us with the detail rate, we're not giving approaches. Police department? Current rate is sixty-three, that's the admin fee and the officer rate, seventy-three for the cruiser. Uh, from my research that I've done, most towns charge between eighty-five and ninety-five, and, um, I have a policy from the Kensington Police Department, of course, I might, too, because they are very similar sized town. Another thing, they've been in our town tremendously the last three months, working for our, uh, power company here, on the labor. They have a policy, they charge ninety dollars an hour, it's fifteen for the cruiser, fifteen for the admin fee, and sixteen to the officer. They have done a tremendous amount of work over the chief for retention and recruitment, because they had issues. We don't offer a lot of overtime in this town, this is one way that we can hopefully get rid of the problem of the retention and recruitment, we don't have a lot of overtime, details don't go in retirement for most of the offices that you hire from now on, moving forward, I think this is a good way, um, because my role is the retirement recruitment, this is one way to do that. Do you have a rate that you're recommending? I'm recommending ninety, I'm recommending fifteen. And I'm... Fifteen for the cruiser, I'm recommending fifteen for the admin fee, which, the cruiser rate's going up five dollars an hour, that's gonna, I'll be gas prices increase. I'm looking to increase the admin fee to dollars, because what we don't want is to lose money, because we pay retirement on two officers right now. And then the rate going from fifty to sixty for the officer, which is a lot in towns, not just Kensington. I think it's wrong for our officers to be working the same details out here, making fifty dollars an hour, with houses from Kensington, who's a very same-sized town, so it's making ten dollars an hour more. Especially when it's still a cost to the town.
How is it, I'm sorry, how is it no cost to the town?
Uh, because it's completely reimbursed by the vendors of town. Right, every store will basically cover the cost, primary detail, different time for others.
Oh, so we are asking vendors to pay this amount?
Yes, and the reason I'm asking for this last meeting is this is the last pay period, um, before the two thousand twenty-two quarter starts. Yep. And we have this amount, let us to the vendors, and consolidated obligations will be in town here very shortly. They have eight to ten offices a day in Newmarket, where in five, they come in. Yep. Uh, I have no more words, you guys?
I know.
Great, I'll make a motion that...
Yeah.
Fire speed. Yeah, yeah.
Bedroom and the key service. I'll, I'll make a motion to raise the pickup rate to the ninety dollars.
I'll second that.
Second, but Betsy, all fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Thank you, have a good night. Great, thank you, Chief. Um, next up on the agenda, Lily Lane, um, I asked Brian if he could be here, it was last time he just came out, but, um...
So is Lily Lane off Old Lee Road?
No, Lily Lane is out eighty-seven. As you go, it's a new development on the left, there we go, towards, up at eighty-seven.
Oh, no, no, I know which one you mean, I didn't know it was Lily Lane.
That's Lily Lane, yep. So, here, here's what the issue is, and, um, it's something that we're gonna have to hopefully avoid in a similar situation that happened down in Garvey. So, there's currently a bond in place for the project, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over. Two blocks haven't been finished being built there, but that bond is going to basically expire, okay? Sue reached out to the, uh, landowner, the original landowner, to see if he can get a, basically, put a new bond in place for only twenty thousand dollars, because the road is not complete. Okay? And, um, I mean, you know this, we don't wanna take, we'll end up taking over the road, but we want the road in a condition that is acceptable to the town, and the bond ensures that the road is done to the, to the, um, to, to the standards of the town before it's turned over. With this bond expiring, the gentleman doesn't seem to be incentivized to put a new bond in place. Now, um, in, I talked to Brian about this, and he indicated that, or he suggested that, what we do is, we basically tell the developers of the parcels that got sold off, you're not gonna get a certificate of occupancy until there is a bond in place on the road.
Oh, that's lovely.
So, um, which I said to Brian, look, I'll talk to the board about this tonight, I think that this is important. We ended up in a situation where a bond expired down in Garvey Lane, it was very difficult, and we had to basically... It was very difficult and we had to basically potentially go through legal action before we got him to complete the system and that road to the standard where the town was willing to take the road. That's the one by Duncan Dunn. So, um, in order to avoid that situation, I, I find this as certainly a first measure to try to ensure that that bond gets put in place. It shouldn't be that expensive, a $20,000 bond.
Yep.
Uh, and certainly it's, it's an easier situation than the one that's currently in place for the 175,000. But we have to do this soon if only because this bond expires sometime this month.
Oh, I would, I would go for it. It's, it's taking...
I just wanted to make sure that you guys are comfortable with us in strike.
There isn't anything more you...
We don't have a whole lot of leverage here and that's about our only leverage, make sure that bond is put in place.
Can I ask some, can I ask some information about this bond?
Sure.
Okay, so I don't really understand the purpose of it. So we have 100, you said, there was a $175,000 bond for payment. What does the bond do?
So when somebody does a development and they're building a road that, um, the town is anticipating will take over for us to maintain, we require them to put a bond in place which basically says if they walk away, the town has the right to draw on that bond to do the work that they were supposed to complete, to make sure that that road is a quality built road that the town ends up taking over. The issue becomes if somebody doesn't build the road correctly, it's substandard, it falls apart, we end up spending a ton of money to repair it and or, and or replace it, um, long before we should. So the bond gets put in place, basically, and the town at a certain point agrees to extingu, allows them to extinguish the bond when, when we take over the road. Now, the 175 is, is for like the whole road. Now, they've done a lot of work on the road, but it's not done. And we're not allowing them to top coat the road until they're done moving heavy equipment across it because it's going to, they are right now doing it, it's grinding it up. So we want the 20,000 bond put in place to basically kind of, uh, get us through to the point in time where they're done developing those lots and then they can go and top coat it and presumably it will be in a standard for the town to take over.
So we're letting the $175,000 one expire?
And now that we're letting it, it has a timeframe on it.
Right. But in, while that's going away, we're going to request a $20,000 bond from them until they are finished.
Correct.
And you also want to link it to an occupancy requirement?
Well, what we want to do is, here's the issue. So the developer who initially put the bond in place sold off all the lots, lots to developers. So he doesn't, he still owns the road, but he doesn't own the lots. With this bond extinguishing, he can basically say, tough cookies, I'm not going to do another bond, no, and by the way, I'm having to repair the road. And that's the situation we ended up with Garvey because it extingu, that one expired. But if we go to the developers right now, who he bought the lots from, and say to them, um, we're not going to issue certificates of occupancy until a bond is put in place, then the developers who have a business relationship with this gentleman are going to say to him, get your bond put in place or, or we're going to sue you. So that's about our only leverage here and, uh, to ensure that a, a new bond is put in place. Uh, we don't have much else to, to go on.
Any, anytime any road work is done, it's generally bonded and, uh, it's just a guarantee.
Yep.
Insurance, and it's, it's scary how often it gets pulled.
Yeah, and then, you know, towns end up with bad roads.
Yeah, it's one, yeah, it's one.
Okay.
So what do we have to do for that?
So I'll talk to, um, both Brian and to Larry Shaw, our, our, uh, our building inspector. And Larry's the one who will basically inform the developers that we'll be no certificates of occupancy issued until there's a $20,000 bond put in place on this road and, um, they can then come back at us and hopefully everyone put in place. I'll talk one minute. When did you have a question?
Why can't you take the 175?
The 175 bond extinguishes, there are terms and conditions about what we can draw on. They're not done and the town isn't in a position to accept the road, so we don't have access to those bond funds before it expires. We can't, we can't just take it now because he's not, they're not done with the road.
And if they take it before they're done, then...
We don't want it before it's done.
Correct.
And, and he hasn't, he hasn't, he hasn't violated any of the terms of the, of the initial bond, it's just it's taken longer than anticipated and this is now expired. It took them a long time to get that development done, sell those lots. I think that's why he ended up selling, I'm not sure, but I think that's why he sold the lots off because he wasn't able to move the project along in a timely manner. But they're getting close on the other two, but with this expiring, we want to make sure this bond is placed. Bobby?
Um, who comes up with that amount? Is that, is that Brian?
Yeah, Brian knows what needs to be done to the road and he has a, a good idea of what, what is necessary, given the condition of the road to get it up to town standard. So it would basically represent, from, from his perspective, basically a new top coat, a new final top coat on it. So that's, that's really where we get the number from, is from there. Okay? All right, then I will, um, I will have a conversation with Larry and with Brian to get that in place.
Is there, there, there can't be a street sign saying Lily Lane. I drive by there all the time.
No, the town hasn't taken it over yet.
Okay, so there isn't?
No, and, and not to, to digress, but you know, they have the granite signage there, which is actually technically against, um, ordinance as a town. Um, and planning has, has, is going to talk to them about it. It was an issue that came up at a prior planning meeting, so.
Happened with Derek Cruz?
Uh, yes, I remember hearing about that. That was before my time on. Okay, so that's Lily Lane. Um, Sue, if you're down there, if you want to come up to talk budget, come on down, come on up. All right, in the meantime, let's go through, um, some of the other more of the day names. So we had the assessing contract with Rod Wood. I find, Rod found it on the desk. Uh, I had a few questions about it, he addressed them. I don't know if you guys have any questions about the assessing contract. Uh, it's basically a renewal of his contract, um, for providing assessing services to the town.
We'll keep over that contract, I'm just going to trust you on this one. That was, that was some pretty dry stuff.
It is very dry. I mean, the assessing work is fairly straightforward. Um, they, they work on the, on the regular assessments along with the state. They deal with any, uh, abatement requests, they're doing the reviews of the abatement, so, um, he's, he's done a decent job over the years. Um, like I said, I have just a few questions to make sure, but, um, Jackie, any questions do you have about the assessment contract?
No, I'll refer to you.
All right. Um, I will make a motion to, um, accept and sign, uh, the contract renewal with Harvey Wood and Associates for assessing services for the town in New York.
How's that?
Second by Jackie, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Today is the 7th?
All day.
All day. I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Jackie. Um, all right, um, we have minutes, oh, here, here. So, oh, I, I get to deal with that. No, we're going to use this right now. That's great.
So you all have the, um, this is just preliminary, I filled in the actual revenues. I estimate you come with them because you still have one more payroll and it's still two, three more weeks to go.
So the actual is basically estimated actual column five, correct?
Correct, yes.
And, uh, column six is, um, some ballpark numbers before we have final budget.
Ballot is four, five.
So we'll utilize this form basically as, uh, preparing our budget to go before we deliver the session. The one that, this one that she gave us, so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that this will probably be the, the primary thing that we'll reference, um, for budget. So on this, uh, speaker, all right, so, hmm, it doesn't... Your second number?
Last week we went over most of the general government.
Oh, you, you invented vital, so that's election and vital. Uh, I'm sorry, that's what I was, I have it as two separate lines, but yes, okay, that's fine. Financial admin, 26, 24, okay, um, so let me, um, as we go through this. So legal expenses, we had $20,000 this year, but this was because we knew it was going to be a, uh, very busy legal year. I don't anticipate that next year we're going to need...
20.
20. I mean, we budgeted 20, we're going to come in around 13, 8 this year and that's on a high year for legal.
We spent so far...
13, 8.
That would look okay.
13, 8, 40. But that includes all of the work on Hazel. Again, I don't anticipate, we're, I, I would recommend that we roll that back to 10.
I have that we spent $15,720.
I have 13, 8, 4, oh, I'm sorry, that's the November number, I'm sorry. This is, I'm late into November.
Does that include two more projects to build for the end?
Um, yeah, he did, he just said that final one that we just signed off.
Planning board, uh, management. So 15, 7.
Oh, the planning boards legal is better than that, or is that the planning budget?
That's not part of the legal. No. We were wrong with that.
Okay, that's fine.
Do we anticipate a busy planning and zoning?
Legal?
Yeah, no, I mean...
There's not, not a lot of projects on the table, right? That's a topic one, and that one's gone through planning already. Um, I, I would say no, that's it. Um, yeah, 15, 7, okay. Oh, yeah, planning is 25, 7, yeah. I don't think we need the full 10, I mean, someone else may say 12, I, I don't care, but I, I certainly don't think...
12 is what I was going to suggest.
Great.
Down to 10, which is just too...
Fine, I'll go with 12.
I agree, 12.
Great. All right, um, so let's continue on planning and zoning, 13, 8, 50. General government buildings, um, so question I had about this is, right now, as the discussion that just took place with the water department, we're looking at if the warrant passes, we won't have $14,000 of water bills between town and fire. About 11,000 in, in, in town and about called 3,000 at the fire. Do we adjust this accordingly so that our warrant issue right now is $11,000 in, in this building? And that's in the general government, general government building line. Do we take it out as part of this line?
I don't think that's a good idea.
Just because that doesn't happen.
Yeah, we, because it's not so much...
Don't go. I understand, um, the bottom line here is going to get out of the deal. I'm looking to find a way to save some money on the budget. Keep it in mind.
You can always remit of it.
Yeah. Um, you also need to take out, um, doesn't the general government's building have the town hall number that we moved to differently?
I took, okay, at our last meeting, we discussed leaving the amount of general government buildings the same. And at first we talked about making it up and then you said we would leave it the same and hold town hall streams and other general government and increase that line by 1,800.
So the, the correct number is 46, 2, right?
That's correct. Right, take the town hall streams out of the general government buildings, it's in 1,800, so it should be 46, 2.
Fine, yep.
Okay, I was thinking a lower only because of the law, but yes, the 46, 2 is correct. Okay, great. All right, uh, cemetery is 31, 5, 15. I know we brought in that rollover number. Uh, insurance is what insurance is, 37, 3, 65, right? Advertising 50, 1, 50. And then other general government's...
What's under that line now?
Um, other general government needs a thing like avatar, computer support, website, professional services, and we put town hall streams in here as well. So that number should be 30,300.
Okay.
Okay? All right, um, police.
I just pulled in the number from the, we...
Yep. Um, any discussion about that line right now? Again, nothing's hard or fast here, we can always have further conversation next week. Most of the increase there, as was discussed at the last meeting, um, I know you weren't here, Betsy, um, but it's the highlighted portion of the police budget, which is, uh, the basically the salary and the health insurance and the retirement. That encompasses the bulk of the increase, which is pretty substantial. It's a $58,000 increase year over year on the budget, uh, 11%. Um, unless it's specifics that anyone wanted raises now, I just leave that as a placeholder, we can have a more detailed discussion.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I'm good, I, I'm sure you want to go over the numbers in more detail, Betsy, because you worked here a lot.
Yeah, I, I just started picking away at...
Yep, that's fine. Yep. Okay, ambulance, 50, 100, um, typically that's been sufficient. Uh, fire, this is another one, which is the other big increase in our budget. So, uh, fire department, this, uh, also goes to an item that we talked about last week. What did you, what did you place? You have the 86, 358, which is the requested budget.
Exactly.
The issue though becomes what was discussed last week, which is the on-call and, um, it basically the additional money necessary to make sure that we have people available to respond. Um, the chief was talking something on before, there was 60 to 80,000 dollars of funding for that line. Last one, yep. So...
That decision?
Yes, yes. That's where we're at. So, um, again, while we defer any formal decision about that right now, um, uh, and I think if you have questions, reach out to, to Jeff, I can also, um, uh, we can go back over that at the next meeting.
There's no good way to do this, Mike.
There is no good way.
No, so, I mean, I, I know there was some discussion over, you know, a warrant article or a line item, it's, it's going to...
I think we put it in the operations budget because if we do it in the warrant article and gets rejected, we may end up in a really bad place in this town for fire. So I, I, I understand why people may want it in the warrant article, I would rather put it in the operating budget.
But that's a lot, it's a lot of money, that's a lot of money.
Of course it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
We have a $50,000...
Yeah, we don't vote line items when, when the budget comes up for debate, it's the bottom line.
Oh, understand, if this fails as a warrant article and we are incapable of spending this money, it's quite possible that we do not have a fire department sufficient for insurance standards in this town and everybody's insurance rates will go up far more than the amount of money that we're talking about.
This should be brought up in the debate.
Oh, that's what deliberative in the budget here is for.
Yeah.
Oh, it's going to be discussed. The question is, do we do it as a warrant article or do we do it in the operating budget? I would advocate it would do it in the operating budget. I, I fear this not asking.
I, and I don't know if, I mean, it's just a lot of money, doubling your budget and I completely understand the need for it, I just wonder if there's some other way to do it. It may not, um, something this big and this is, this is a huge change, um, which is part of, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty much how we fund and what we fund for fire, so, um, I, I just know as a, as a voter, I'd feel duped if I saw that in the, the budget and, and you can vote, you know, to cut a grand from the... And you can vote, you know, to cut eighty grand from the bottom line, but that is really up to the board's discretion during the year, whether you come up with the money someplace else or not. You can't win on this.
I'm not saying that we're gonna win on this.
No, but...
Look, my...
It's gonna be messy.
There's, obviously these public discussions, and this'll come up at our next meeting at the end of this month, it will come up in the budget hearing in January, it will come up in the deliberative session, and then there is a vote. So, trust me, I think that we have to have a discussion, and everybody needs to understand what is going on here, and we need to be very clear about it. And I have no doubt, Chief is gonna have plenty to say about the importance of this. My concern is, if we do this as a separate warrant article and do not incorporate it into the operating budget, and it does not pass, the implications of that might not be good. Look, if the town in deliberative session says, no, we wanna do this, not in the budget, then that's the way it's gonna happen. But I just don't, I have a real concern about doing this as a warrant article.
If people are presented with facts, it'll be okay. Okay.
Josephine, I mean, my hesitation comes from the discussions that we've had with Jeff so far, in that this isn't a long-term solution to a problem. So, does it make sense to double the budget? Like, I completely understand where he's coming from, it's just so much money to try and swallow for something that probably isn't...
It's not just money, though, it's a big shift in a very important department.
Right.
And how it's run, and who manages it, and it's gonna change the structure. Whether the fire department knows it or not, it's gonna change the structure, it's going to add some bureaucracy, let's meet even more. It's, it's entirely, it's just...
So, if we do, if, Michael, if we put this in the operating budget as a proposal, and we take it to deliberative session?
Yep.
Is it going, is that the time when we can, you know, people make a big, are upset with it? Then we take it out and run it into a warrant article?
No.
Okay.
It's too late for that?
Well, no, no. One way to address that is we have a warrant article that basically is talking about funding this with a dollar as a placeholder. And if they remove it in deliberative, they can put it into that, they amend the warrant article to put the money in there. So, if we, again, I...
You're still, D...
You'll have it one way or the other.
Yeah, but, I mean, D, getting the information out and informing the voters of that, I mean, I understand what you're doing, but I...
No, 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 that's a platform for the deliberative session to basically say, we want it in the operating budget or we want it in a warrant article. They'll have the choice to do that. I...
How does putting the money in the, in the budget at this point before the deliberative? How does that, does that tie our hands in that money?
Well, technically, no, nothing ties our hands in terms of the money. Where our hands are tied is the bottom line budget number, one point, call it eight, or maybe one point nine million dollars. We are allowed to spend as a town up to one point nine million. We can pass a budget, and the board technically has the discretion to go out and buy one point nine million dollars with a lottery ticket and not spend money on anything else. The whole idea, though, is that, you know, with the budget, the town has a good sense of approximately how much money is gonna be spent. Now, if this, if that eighty thousand stays in the operating budget for the fire, we're still not required to spend it on the fire department. And if six months in, this is a failure, we just don't spend the money, you know, continuing a failed program. But what it does do is gives us in the fire department the flexibility to do that. Now, again, going back to my concern, is that as this independent warrant article, it fails. Then we have no ability to utilize funds in our budget, because everything else is basically being called on to implement a program like that. That's why I would prefer to do it in the operating budget. But, like I said, if we wanna consider it as a warrant article, I would suggest that we draft a warrant article with a dollar, so that at deliberative, they can change the dollar around, because that's a perfectly legitimate change at deliberative session. If they wanna take it out of operating and put it into warrant, then they can do that at deliberative.
What if we, um, that might work, but you know, another thing that's nagging at me is, I have not seen anything printed up, I mean, Jeff has come in and...
Yeah, it was last meeting, he was here with some stuff at last meeting. Look, let's not, we don't need to decide about this right now, we're gonna have another meeting, then we have budget, and budget hearing to finalize this to deliberative.
I'm warming up to the dollar.
Do we, can, do we have the option to write forty thousand in? And give them half of what they're asking for, and then put forty thousand up for a warrant article for the rest?
Again, we can do that, my fear would be people say, oh, we're already jacking up the budget fifty percent, why are we asking for another forty thousand?
Yeah, I...
That becomes, in my opinion, a more difficult argument to have a general discussion with the town about. We no longer have town meeting, so it is people walking into a ballot booth without really understanding what's going on. But, trust me, we can do that, and at deliberative, we can certainly make that amendment if that's what the body wants to do. Again, I think that if we put it in operating and have a warrant article with one dollar, at deliberative session, we can figure out how to make this work. But look, think on it, think on it, we don't need to make a decision tonight on this.
I'm just thinking, splitting it like that might give us, you know, six months for the fire department to figure this out, but also gives the townspeople an opportunity to say, you know, I'm not, I'm not a fan of this idea.
Well, if you split it, I think you can pretty much guarantee that the fire department will only get half, because as a new program, and, you know, Joe Voder probably looked at it and said, well, we'll try it out, but we're not gonna fully pump it, so... I mean, that's...
No, no, look, I think all of this, the discussion we're having here, will end up being the type of discussion at deliberative, right? What I'm recommending is, at least for now, keep it in the operating, have the warrant article available, but we can figure out how we wanna split it.
Why do you need to keep it in the operating budget?
Why would I leave it in the operating budget?
Yeah.
I'd leave it at the operating budget till we get to deliberative. And at deliberative, we have the conversation with the public body to say, this is why we need these funds, right? This is the request for these funds, it's in the operating budget. And if the body says, we don't think that that should go into the operating budget, then, okay, then we have a warrant article, we can move it over to a warrant article to have a separate vote on. I think that's an easier argument to make than coming to them with a warrant article and saying, no, 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 we need to put it back into the operating budget.
No, I take back what I said, I, yeah, I need to think about this.
Yes, I think we all do, but I think with the idea of having a line item in a one-dollar warrant article as allowing the town to figure out at deliberative session how it wants to present it.
Yeah, but you know, you end up walking away with the full eighty grand.
For what?
What do you mean?
If you put eighty grand in the budget, and the warrant article fails, and then people say, you know, we only wanna fund it for forty or something, it's still up to the board's discretion, and it...
To spend the fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they could have anything in the budget, but we could end up not spending any of it.
Yeah.
I doubt it too, but again, that's up to the board's discretion. If for some reason we think, you know what, this is never gonna work, or Chief comes back and says, forget it, this isn't working, we need to come up with something else. Because quite possibly, come February, he says, the statistics are having no impact, we can't get anybody to sign up for our call, so we're not gonna keep doing this program.
Has he started then?
No, he hasn't started it yet. And that's what he was talking about at the last meeting, he said, I had no idea if this was gonna work.
Right, which is why I'm so hesitant about the budget.
Yeah, it's fun, yeah, it's, it's, uh... Well, later.
All right, let's, let's hold off on that, all right. Building inspection, five thousand. Emergency management, eighteen-two. It was eighteen-two in prior years, we lowered it last year for budget reasons, but I think we're putting it back at eighteen-two this year.
I have seventeen-two.
I have seventeen-two also.
Is it seventeen-two? Was the budget request seventeen-two? Okay, great, I'll take it. Fine, any money. Streets, the budget is three-thirty-six-hundred. Lighting, seven thousand. Yep.
So street lighting, so...
Yeah, because of electricity prices, I need a quick calculation, seven thousand, you're fine. All right, waste collection, disposal, recycling, and cleanup. So, going by the numbers that we have on, uh, that's tax rate, that's revenue, that's, okay, wait a minute. So, next year's tonnage for collection is one hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Tipping fee at the library is seventy dollars.
A ton.
A ton. Our weekly tonnage is approximately eleven point two. So, that comes out to, uh, for collection at one fifty-three point five-nine, times fifty-two, times, I have eleven point three, I rounded it up.
Yeah.
It's ninety thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
For just collection?
For just collection of tracks, okay?
What was that number again?
Ninety thousand two hundred and forty-nine. So, the disposal number is, that's same fifty-two, times eleven point three, times the seventy, that is forty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars for disposal, okay? Now, typically, in the waste disposal line, we also include our payments to Newmarket for access to the transfer station, which will total something on the order of seventy-five hundred dollars. Give or take.
Okay.
Okay?
So, we have to wean ourselves off of it and...
Well, no, and, you know, that's, you know, for access, for people to bring, you know, metal or they bring yard waste up there, they drop off the trees.
I think it's also required that you don't have...
Oh, no, absolutely, we need to continue that. Cleanup, we have at fifty-five hundred?
Fifty-two?
Oh, I thought that we needed to go slightly higher this year. I know last year it was fifty-two, I think this year we ran a little over.
We tripled this year.
A little, I had seventeen-one.
Not in the Hazel.
But that Hazel line is buried in there, so I think it was fifty, about fifty-five hundred this year.
And don't forget recycling has to go along.
No, I'm not, recycling, I have, I'm about to do the numbers on recycling.
Okay.
So, on recycling, um, the flat fee for collection is fifty thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, assuming we want to re-up the option on L, which I would assume that we are going to do. The tonnage was about one point seven tons per week, times fifty-two weeks, times the disposal rate of one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-six cents. That's from L, that'd be estimated rate for that. So that comes to a total recycling number of sixty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Does that add in the collection?
That is both collection and the other, it's both, you know, basically...
Not disposal.
Not disposal, but the, you know, the net fees, the net fees that we get.
So we have the nine thousand two fifty plus the sixty-two thousand three hundred and eighty.
Technically, yes, we put those into the same line item, although I would highly recommend, if possible, can we have a separate recycling line in sanitation?
We could, we...
We should.
Yeah?
We should, no, it was always buried in, like, it was always buried in collection and disposal.
Yeah.
But I see no reason why we don't break up recycling in a separate line.
No.
If you can do that soon, that would be great.
So we'll make it the...
I mean, pick a line item.
We can take like first one. The first one, forty-three twenty-one, we could change it to...
From administration to recycling?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay?
So, I'm seeing that, um, we have twenty, twenty-two thousand almost left in that warrant article from this year.
Uh, sure.
So, um, what is, what ends up happening with that money? Is that something like that will go into that unencumbered funds?
Yes, yeah, that's it, it's, like any other budget line, it's a use it or it rolls into unrestricted, uh, who is it? So that'll, that'll roll into that basically line item, warrant article. Okay? Uh, catch control, thirty-two-five. Speaking of which, I know that you had some questions about this.
Yeah, it's not well done.
Understood.
It's not professional.
I'm not saying it is, you know, it's something that we have just relied on then to basically get the permits in our name for, for next year, but we can talk about that. I just wanted as a reminder that, you know, people's interest.
We're gonna have science class there on.
Say thirty-two-five.
Thirty-two-five?
And it was thirty-three-one-fifty, so...
Oh, okay, I might have been...
It was a non-hospital?
No.
Okay.
I might have just been rounded, worried about additional monies. Everything else is costing more, hopefully that won't be a problem. Health agencies, seventy-five hundred, direct assistance, four thousand, parks and ref, sixteen hundred?
I have twenty-five.
So that was my...
I have twenty-five, I have...
Oh, great. Twenty-five hundred is...
It's pretty deep.
I'd like a raise, however.
Take it to the voters. Library is sixty-four-one-thirty, patriotic is five hundred, and celebration is seventy-seven-seventy-five?
Seventy-seven-fifteen?
No, 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 um, no, no, it's, it's not, they forgot to add, they didn't, they didn't add properly. It is seven, it is seventy-seven-five. There was sixty dollars in memorial that they didn't account for, so it's seventy-seven-seventy-five. Okay?
Big change.
Conservation committee, forty-two-fifty. And do you have an updated number that service grants here?
Yes, I put it in there.
Oh, great.
So...
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going off my spreadsheet number.
I think that one goes down to sixty thousand?
Sixty-eight-eighty-three.
Yeah, so we can go for the two thousand and eighty-three. We all have three, but we didn't have one on that.
Um, I think two after, well, after, after this year, after the upcoming year, I think it's three years now.
It's maybe twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six.
So we have one?
Ah, four.
Four years until we manage it.
Four years.
So this was for the big land purchase, is that what?
Yes, yeah, yep.
Well, lived to see it.
Conservation is gonna be...
Don't say that, that's...
I might.
Okay, so, right now, I had a, have, with the, with the fire money in there, and the police budget where it's at, I have a bottom line of eighteen-eighty-nine-four-ninety-four.
Eighteen-eighty-nine. Does it one million?
Yeah. Almost two.
I remember when the...
So...
And did that include the recycling?
That has recycling in it. Yeah, the recycling number is part of the operating budget, yep. So, warrant articles, we have three. Fire truck of fifty thousand, rescue equipment of two, and the one hundred seventy-fifth town celebration of five thousand. We don't have here. I just wanna add to mine. Okay, so...
So I have a question about this, the fire warrant article. Is that something that is raised, that's something raised every year?
Yes.
Yes.
Goes into the, it goes into the fire truck reserve, capital reserve. That, in other words, we're saving up money... That, in other words, we're saving up money every year as opposed to going to the town and requesting five hundred thousand dollars all at once, which would, you know, jump the tax rate.
We used to do it with police cruisers too, and then that got too, but... The one question, um, I have to credit my husband with saying this. I said that if they were to buy the new fire truck, it would be too big for the building and they'd need to change. And my husband innocently said, can't they buy a smaller truck? I, it's not really funny, it's, it...
Well, that, and that's the thing. Like, I know that this, how much is in this, this capital reserve fund? I'm just curious and does it...
I think three hundred and...
Three hundred, at least three hundred thousand.
I was gonna say three fifty, right now. Fire trucks are deeply...
Oh, there, there's...
It's interesting. It's like, it's like, it's like...
I just wonder though if we're, what is it like, let's... We are going to need a new fire truck, but then we're going to need a new building.
But this is where I'm saying, is that guaranteed or can you get a smaller?
No, and I think that's, look, they can't expend those funds until they come before the town to expend them. And so they're gonna have to basically tell the town what they're looking for, what kind of truck. Are there other options? What are the other options? What are the implications of that? All this is doing is, is basically ensuring that if and when the town needs to go get a new truck, that we're, you know, basically doing it on the installment plan.
Yeah.
Um, but to, to your point, again, can we get a smaller truck? That's really gonna be the question when they come to the town and say, this is the truck that we're thinking of wanting to get.
Because, I mean, you get, you get that size truck and then it's not able to be protected. That's nuts.
Just, oh, yeah, no, no. It's, it's, um, that's, it's a bigger broader question.
Oh, yeah.
Where does that, so where does that money go if we don't end up buying a fire truck?
Like, we go back into the general fund?
Go back to it, actually, yeah. We probably go back to the general fund and if we're never gonna buy a fire truck, then I would assume the board would then, you know, re-issue it back to the taxpayers.
Yeah, it means it'll reduce the tax rate.
The town have to vote on that because of the...
Yes, because of the, the town would have to extinguish the fund.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
None of this would happen if that happened.
Okay, so right now I have a bottom line after the warrant articles of one nine four six, four nine four, which is a nine percent increase over the total outlay for the last year. But wait, there's more.
There's more. What would it be without the eighty?
Um, one eight six six, four nine four. So this goes to the earlier discussion that I knew that we were gonna get into. So the ARPA money and money for the, for the water department. So, you know, we've been talking about this now for several months, about ARPA money. We are getting approximately a hundred and seventy-one thousand. We've received the first tranche of that. I think it was around a hundred thousand. I can't remember. But let's assume for a moment it's around a hundred thousand that we received. It's, towns received those funds. We haven't spent a dime of ARPA money yet. I would recommend at a minimum that, assuming that we want to allow, uh, we want to expend money from the town to go to the water department for the two projects they outlined, the twenty-four thousand for the wells, the seven thousand for the valves, that we do it before the end of this year.
Yeah, I think we're all...
Because we, yeah, but the, I wanted you to see the bottom line here because the more we roll into next year, I have yet to have a conversation with DRA about this, but I believe if we are going to expend those funds, we have to include it in next year's budget in some way, shape or form. I don't want to put more money into next year's budget, even though we have the revenue for it, because all we're doing is jacking up the budget. If we can expend those funds in this year and we have capacity right now under our budget, I think, to be able to cover the thirty-one thousand for the water department, we should spend it this year.
I agree.
I, I, I wanna have this conversation so we're all on the same page with respect to, at a minimum, that, that way. Then it also comes down to the other things that we're spending ARPA money on. Now, there's a bunch of things. Rhodes had fifty-one thousand dollars of requests. Not all of it I think that we can do under ARPA. There's also the option for premium pay under ARPA because we don't have a ton of infrastructure. We don't have, you know, it's just the nature of our time. Now, we don't have to spend this right away. We have several years to do it. But if we were down to consider anything under premium pay for employees to compensate them for during time of COVID, I would suggest that we do at least some of it or whatever we want to expand on premium pay before the end of this year as well. We can get it under, I, I'm convinced, especially in talking about, you know, the encumbrances for the police department and what we expect to come down to the end of the year, I think that we can do that under this year's budget. If we push it to next year, it means we're rolling more money into a bottom line that'll probably top two billion dollars.
How severely were town employees impacted by COVID? We never really shut down.
Nope.
We never really inconvenienced anybody. And I'm, I'm not trying to take money...
Oh, no, no, I understand.
It's just...
Again, it is, looking at uses for these funds, um, there's not a lot of categories that apply here.
Right, the water department is a number of projects that need to be done that falls under this.
Understood, but I, I also wanna remind everybody the water department is not this town.
Not the whole town.
Correct, it's not the whole town. It's less than half the town. And so, um, that has to be considered. Again, I don't, the wells, the valves, absolutely they need to get this done. No problem doing it. But I don't think that we wanna commit a huge percentage of the ARPA money to the water department when they're not part of the town government and they only service less than half the town.
Correct, but that's the designation for most of the money.
No, no, that's a variety of categories. Premium pay certainly is one. I, I have no problem, I, look, I would rather reward the employees who are working for this town than throw more money at the water department.
Wow, well, I'm part of the water department and that's kind of insulting. I have no problem spending some of the money on premium pay. However, there is a large amount of this money that is very specific in the way it's supposed to be spent and there are not a lot of options for our town to spend that money. But we have a number of water and sewer projects that need to be done, that need to be done for this town that fall under those funds. And I do not want the water and sewer district to be short-changed just because they only service half the town. That's not fair to the residents who are gonna end up having to pay for many of these projects, nor is it really an honest expenditure of this money that we've been given. This isn't taxpayer, like, town taxpayer money necessarily. So we should use it to the best that we can. It's all the same.
I understand, but understand there are, the majority of the people in this town don't live in the water district. They receive no benefits from it. This town took on the burden of agreeing to the general permit under the Great Bay nitrogen permit that this town did not have to agree to do. And this town will be spending money to, in, in support of the water and sewer department.
That is, that's a...
Oh, hold on, it is not.
It is, because it's based on groundwater. Every single person in this town contributes to groundwater.
This town was under no obligation to do that. This town was under no obligation fifteen years ago to give land to the water and sewer department for a cell tower that they get all the revenue for, that the town sees nothing from. This town, this town has been very generous to the water and sewer department. It has been very generous. It has treated it as a, I do not think it is appropriate for us to take what is funds for the town and be constantly dedicating them to the water and sewer department.
I'm not saying, but I'm saying with this particular tranche of money, there are very specific ways that it needs to be spent. And we have a lot of projects for the water department that are coming up that very specifically fall under this funding. Now, that does not mean that we can't take some of it for premium pay. But I do not want the water and sewer department to be short-changed with this amount of funds, knowing what is coming down the pipe for the town and the peoples in the water and sewer district.
What kind of money are we talking about when you say premium pay?
Well, again, it's, it's open for discussion, but we're, we're talking about...
Well, no, you're, I mean, we're talking thousands of dollars.
You bet.
So we have very few employees.
It, it, you, it's basically an hourly assessment that we're, we're allowed to basically do an hourly stipend for those, for the employees in town, right? This would be for basically frontline, the only employees we really have are frontline, right? It is police department, fire departments, frontline, and it is town employees who have to deal, had to deal with people throughout all of the COVID situation. The question is...
It's not bonus money.
It's, it's premium pay. It's...
I think it was, wasn't it really intended for people who are engaged in that actively?
Sure.
Now, I mean...
Well, no, it was, it was for during COVID. It was all through twenty-twenty. People who had to engage with the general public and bore the risk of engaging with the general public, this was basically a kind of a, yes, it's kind of, it's considered basically a type of bonus.
No, the way I read it was to hire more employees and to provide hazard pay.
Again, hazard pay.
Hazard pay.
That's, that's what we're talking about here, as hazard pay.
So then what are you considering for hazard pay? What are your thoughts? Like, are you thinking...
My thought is something along the lines of a dollar or two dollars an hour for those, for those employees.
For all those hours that they work?
Yeah.
Well, keep, my mind is, so how many hours are worked in a year?
Again, depending on the departments, but I was looking at something using, using something around thirty thousand dollars between the police department, who have massive hours, between the fire department, went to respond constantly throughout the year to the frontline employees in the offices.
You give that money to the fiber department, they don't pay anybody.
Yeah.
No, they have the hours for, for people who responded. They, they sell those hours.
Retroactively, they'll get paid for responding.
Correct, it's the hazard pay. It, it's basically considered the hazard pay during COVID. That's what we're reimbursing or, or compensating it for.
I don't know that that's what, I would have to... If you were to give an employee, Sue, don't bite my head off, you were to pass twenty grand or thirty grand to Sue for hazard pay.
Well, Sue me again, twenty or thirty grand.
Well, no, but I don't wanna say...
Across everybody, all the employees in town. Sue across all the police, across the offices and across the fire.
Well, we just don't have that many. I'm, I'm trying to come up with what one full-time person, what would...
I can tell.
Sue thousands.
No, 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 hold on. I have it right here.
End up being very divisive.
No, I think you, you look, so for example, most of the, most of the fire employees, we're talking several hundred dollars each. Um, police, um, depending upon which one, because there's a variety of hours, but, you know, couple of the officers only worked a couple hundred hours. Some of them worked close to two thousand hours. Um, Donna, Sue, Kisho, anywhere between the thousand and fifteen hundred hours.
We need to talk about this. And I also think this is a, a classic time when we go into non-public to discuss this kind of thing because it does have to do with...
Sure, that's, that's fine. Again, in the, in the context of the budget, I, I, I seriously think that this is a good use of the COVID money.
But it might not be appropriate. It might not be, from my understanding of it, it wasn't retroactive hazard pay. It was very specific about who could get it.
Um, okay. The conversations I've had in other towns have already done this.
Doesn't make it right.
I'm not saying it makes it right. My reading of it says this is exactly what it was intended for. The hazard pay, it's gonna be retroactive because the federal government only paid the money out.
Yeah, but the hazard pay for a town that didn't suffer.
Right, and where we have projects that have to be done that this money can be used for, like, thirty thousand dollars is almost twenty percent of this pool of funds. And that's a lot of money. When, you know, like, we're not dealing, Sue, how many people do you see in the office every day? Handful, maybe?
Yeah.
I mean, if we're not a real busy city, you know, department with lots of people that you're interacting with and everything, and I'm not pointing you out specifically, but it just, I don't know.
And I have a question, it has nothing to do with the pay. So the money that you would like to have spent on water and sewer, could you put a warrant article in? Sue, no, they have to raise the money.
Yes.
Could you put a warrant article in with no money, asking if the town was in favor of using ARPA funds for these water and sewer projects? I'm just throwing it out there, I really thought so much about it.
Let me say this, if the town comes back and rejects that warrant article, are we saying that we're not gonna spend any money on water and sewer with ARPA funds?
Yeah, and since the categories are so limited, we don't wanna, if we have ways...
I don't think that's, I, I, I don't think that's a wise course of action.
And I don't even know if that, if we, if that would be an appropriate venue for it because it's not, you know, you're right. You know, it's like, it's other money.
Federal funds, right?
Right.
Federal?
Yeah, they're federal funds, but they're gonna...
It's already money.
It's a federal grant, it's town funds though. Let, let's, don't, don't misunderstand.
We, it's not money that we can just take and put into our coffers, that we have to do it very specifically. So it's not really something that the taxpayers, in a sense, have a say over because it's federal funds.
No, they absolutely have a say over it. They, they, they can have a veto over that. There's no doubt that they have a veto over that. We still have to only expend the funds in a manner that it is permitted. But if the town were to say, we don't wanna spend any money on the water and sewer district, then we ain't spending any money on the water and sewer district.
I don't understand where you're considering.
That's if you put it on a warrant.
Yeah, put on a warrant.
It's a bad idea.
No, you're, you said that people can veto it. I'm trying to figure out where you're getting what...
If, if somebody were to come to us with a citizen's warrant that says, we don't wanna spend any ARPA money on water and sewer, and it passes, then water and sewer doesn't get any money. We'd still have to spend it, the rest of it, according to the, the, the federal guidelines, but we can't violate what the town determines, uh, something like that.
No, that, that...
But no, I, when I say that, I mean...
Like, reject it, not veto it, reject it. I think that's where you're getting it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, but, okay.
We have to get this money back if we don't use it.
We do. Now, along these lines, putting the premium pay issue aside, there is another item with respect to the ARPA funds that we can consider.
Can I just pause you for a second?
Sure.
So you were saying this $31,000 to you. Where's this money coming from that you were going to grant the water and sewer with? Is that, are we talking about this one from this year? That's this year.
That's, and basically what we would do is say, "We are going to utilize $31,000 of the ARPA money that we have already received, and we will expend it. We have capacity in our existing budget to be able to redo that under our existing budget." And so we would expend those monies under the existing budget.
And then be reimbursed?
No, no, no. We've already been, we have the money from ARPA. We just have to report to ARPA that we spent $31,000 of the ARPA funds in 2021 with respect to the water department for the projects that they requested.
So what was the other?
So, there's another category called revenue replacement. And there's a formula in the rules promulgated by the federal government as to how to calculate revenue replacements.
What did we lose?
They basically have a threshold of 4.1% increase of revenue. And we did not increase our revenue by 4.1%. Because there is a gap between the 4.1% threshold in what we raised, using their formula, I have a revenue replacement that's available to the town of $57,037.51.
And that just goes...
And that just went shut down. So... So, that $57,031 as revenue replacement, we can take that under ARPA and actually use it for anything.
Well, duh, then why have we been going through all this?
Wait a minute.
It's only $57,000. It's a chunk, it's a trustee. This is part of all this discussion.
But is it on top of the $171,000?
No, no. We are dedicating $57,000 out of the $171,000 to take as revenue replacement, which means that we are saying we did not see the 4.1% increase. If we hadn't seen the 4.1% increase, we would have collected an extra $57,031. So we can take that portion as basically, call it flexible ARPA money that we can then do anything with.
But do we need it?
I would say we would be crazy not to do this, because this gives us flexibility. We can spend however we want.
Yeah, so you're talking...
But it also takes money away from the rest of the funds. So if we do that, because we've got the 57 plus the 31 to the water, then that leaves us 90...
$90,000, correct. Something in that ballpark.
98, $171,000.
No, no, 31 and 51 is 82 off of...
You're right.
$171 is about $90,000. And look, we don't have to make decisions about the rest of the money here. That's not what we're talking about.
Somewhere along the line, Rhodes got... And then Rhodes is 51.
Rhodes isn't requesting 51, but to be honest, I think $23,000 of the Rhodes request doesn't qualify.
Okay. Well, that's why I was looking for a stronger number. Whoa, yeah, that... You pulled that out one of the time. That is good.
So, my suggestion here tonight is one. If you guys will take a vote to, on the money from the water department before the end of this year. Two, I would recommend that we consider the revenue replacement as a good utilization of $51,000, 57... What did I say?
$57,000.
$57,000, thank you. $57,000, right? And then, everything else, you don't have to make decisions on right now. I highly recommend we, you guys, consider the premium pay. I'm not, in no way was I expecting any decision on that right now. But I think it's a good utilization of the funds. The Rhodes stuff won't be done until next year anyways. We're not doing that in the winter, so we can, we don't have to make decisions about that right now. Okay?
When do we have to make a decision about the revenue replacement?
We can do it anytime. Bobby, you've been here.
Thank you. I was, you mentioned the seven expenditure categories, which I just found. I also forgot ARPA's. I thought you were saying ARPA's. But I know. The number one, you know, it's one through seven. The first category is public health. Is there any way that I can potentially have some dollars to use, given that...
Make a request.
I guess I wouldn't think of the 400,000 dollars at all. Is that a mail you sent?
Yes, yep.
So like, in the same category of...
Look, go look at that. I recommend you may want to talk to other public health officers in some other towns and see if they utilize ARPA funds as well. Come up with some thoughts about how you might need or want to utilize the money.
So this was what the water department sent us, just a letter with what they were asking for? And like, this is what the Rhodes agent sent us for GoPro funds, so just...
You think you can send an email describing it? It's not formal. There's no forms or anything here. What we're going to have to end up doing is, at a certain point in time, accounting for the funds back to treasury, saying that we complied with the ARPA rules. Here's how we spent it, here's what we spent it on, et cetera, et cetera.
But there's no deadline as it like has to be done at the beginning of this year?
No.
And...
But I'll say this. If you have something and you want to do it, I would like to spend more money this year than next year.
Yeah, the more we can vote in this year, the better.
Well, I'm also trying to find if there's things that we can purchase that might help. Like, for example, if people want access to testing, you know, I have to see if that's categorically available here. And if it is, I would absolutely be very interested in that. I can help, write a proposal for that and figure out if it helps.
So you must know something about, I mean, the state provided free testing kits, and they're gone.
They're gone on some of our... But, yes.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, so I won't play you. I thought that was, I thought that...
Yeah. No, no, no. Great question. Great question. Okay, so we've kind of beaten this to death for now. I will make a motion that we expend $31,000 of the received ARPA funds before the end of the year for the project outlined by the water and sewer department that they provided to us for usage of those funds.
A second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor to say aye? Aye. Okay. $31,000 coming your way. Okay, so, we have the bottom-line budget number. We're still around the, with the $80,000, the 1-9-4-6. Again, that's not, nothing final, but that's where we're at with the 80 in the fire department, plus the warrant articles. Okay?
That's total, total. That's the fact.
That's the outlet. That's the outlet that we are currently operating under. Okay? It's a big, big jump.
See, that, the fire department stuff might be more under ARPA funds, if I'm thinking about it. If we're talking about doing some kind of...
Doesn't qualify. I believe the hazard pay is only through December 2020, if I remember. We can simply check, but I don't think it qualifies.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. The hazard pay is through December 2020?
I believe that's correct.
So then we're not talking about 30 grand in ARPA money for hazard pay? If it was for nine, six, what was that, eight months?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is 2020 month. I think it's at the end of this year. I apologize. I apologize. Sorry about that. No, no, no. Somebody write. Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
His laptop died. He's going to...
I think, I believe that hazard pay had an expiration date associated with it, because it was associated with people responding during the prime COVID period. Definitely go back and look. I don't think the next year qualifies. But we'll definitely take one. Okay? So, we have a meeting at the end of this month. We're going to go over the budget one more time. Budget hearing is January 8th?
11th.
11th? And then deliberative session is in February, and obviously town elections are in March. So we'll basically have several bites of this apple before we get it done. But at our next meeting, we really need to come up with what we are going to present at the budget hearing. If need be, we can always have a quick meeting before that, if there's any final items that you guys want to talk about. Okay? All right. Budget meetings are always long.
Oh.
All right, so regulations expenditures, I think we were trying to cut the meeting to death. Prior, we have two prior meeting minutes.
All right, I didn't understand why there were two. I mean...
We went long last time. You weren't here, so we just defer. We just defer.
Because I defer to the ninth with me.
Do you have a lobby in the ninth?
It's okay. It's, in the scheme of things, I...
It was not a long meeting, so, okay, so let's, we'll take two minutes here. We'll go, you have the 30th one, so you're...
Yeah.
We'll quickly go through those.
Well, I had, I had two for the ninth, I think. That must be a mistake.
Isha, I just had something from 30th.
Okay.
On the second paragraph. I don't know if this is quite worded correctly about us agreeing to...
No, I was about to say the same thing. No, no, no. The board agreed to consider the increase. First line and second paragraph. After further discussion, Chief Boxman and the board agreed to consider an increase in the fire department budget. But we, there was no firm and hard agreement there. We would consider it as part of the budget.
Yeah, that's going to be.
And it would not will be. It would be, the next line, it would be implemented. Okay?
Wow, that grocer's 2015?
Oh, so that's what the detail budget is, when they pay the $15?
Correct. Goes into the detail budget. And typically, we use that for these kinds of things.
I'm thinking card.
Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, no, no. It's a road detail.
That's what I thought, too, the new card. Oh, detailing.
Do you do mine?
Yeah, then you mentioned water and sewer charges for both the town and the fire department. Was it just the town? On page two.
So, page two, yeah, we talked about it in terms of the town.
Yeah.
And again, it's town hall and fire department. The number that we had talked about was 14,000.
Okay.
And that's both town hall and fire department.
Oh, what do we have to do about this? The cutting, the...
Oh, intent to cut.
Yeah.
Oh!
Great. Let's finish with the minutes. There's actually a second item that is, Bobby, like, thank you. Because there's another item that we need to talk about, which is what you sent an email about, is the Vernon Family Farm liquor license. So let's just finish this up first.
Oh, man.
Vernon?
Yeah. I mean, that really stinks to find the oldest person. They're not always pleased to get it.
It's typically Bill Keever, I think.
Oh!
I think Bill's next in line, if I remember correctly.
Oh, I'd like to go with that.
Yeah. Well, again, he's next in line.
Oh, man. He was, he was on the first board with me.
Everybody good?
Yep.
I will make a motion to approve the November 30th minutes as amended.
Seconded.
Seconded by Betsy. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. You're good?
Yep.
Oh, okay, great. I didn't see, you're right. Just wanted to make double check. Okay, and I will make a motion to approve, are you looking at the ninth, mean?
I'm just...
Double checking?
Yeah.
I'll give you a minute. Are you good with it? I'll make a motion to approve the November 9th minutes as written.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jackie. All in favor? Aye. Great. Okay, so, an issue was raised with the intent to cut that was discussed last meeting. So Bobby sent us an email asking about it because his law was indicated on the intent to cut.
Yeah. One minute, I don't know if it was on the...
I believe it was on, it was on the permit as well. And so, it's a question as to the intent to cut on a property that is not the Tuckler's. Now, in looking at this, and I corresponded with Bobby today, I think you guys might have been part of the email. As part of the deal on the property at Old Lee, they were basically swapping, right? The existing access that they have, which comes in between your property and your neighbor's property, for the portion on his property that would be the entrance to the road, which is, I believe, why they submitted it as lot 14, which is Bobby's, and lot 15, which is the development behind. Now, in asking about this, I asked Bobby, "Has the transaction been completed for the access exchange?" And he indicated that they're not done yet. They're still going through some issues. Now, the intent to cut, we don't necessarily give them access to it. The intent to cut is basically approving their, you know, they're allowed to cut, and they are agreeing to the taxes associated with it.
Timber tax.
Yeah, timber tax. Doesn't mean that they have access to your property in property. And we're not, this doesn't give them any authority to go on your property.
That's what I, I just wanted to ask.
So I think that there's no changes that need to be made. Certainly let us know if you run into a problem before everything's been sorted out about access, or if you have a problem about where they're cutting. But I don't think there's anything that we need to do at this point in time with respect to it.
Do you, I understand, I understand what you're saying. Is there any way that I could have access to the letter that was requested, or was that like...
The intent to cut?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's downstairs. It's a public document. Yep.
I would have asked, I didn't want...
Yeah. Oh, no, no, absolutely, Bobby. It's public documents.
I understand what you're saying.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, it's not as smooth a process as...
No, I mean, that one has not been. But yeah, and like I said, if you run into a problem, if you think that, you know, there's an issue about where they're cutting, just let us know.
Yeah, so far not exactly this point, so I'll...
Great.
Thank you.
Yep.
So much. So, just coming back to this very second, the anticipated start date is the 29th of November. Does it matter that they put that as their anticipated start date? Does that lock anybody into...
No, it doesn't change anything. And again, I would suggest, I would suggest to you that you reach out to them, that, you know, go and get a copy of this. Reach out to them and say, "I noticed that you did the intent to cut. The lot 14 is indicated on this. I assume that that's the access that you're doing. We haven't formalized that." And I was just suggesting you reach out and have that conversation with them.
And just for firing, if something does happen before things are officially, formally relocated...
Let us know. I would... Yeah, until that, again, it's your property until it's not.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, last item, hopefully, Vernon Family Farm. We received notice that they are requesting a liquor license on their premises. Betsy, stupidly noted that there may be problems with this, given certainly the zoning out there. There are other issues, actually. And looking over chapter 178, which is the liquor license, and I asked, they are applying for a combination license under 178-18. That license has certain requirements of them.
Right.
Not the least of which is, they have to have $3,000 of wholesale grocery stock. Not the least of which is, they have to have three thousand dollars of wholesale grocery stock on premises.
Would you call that a store?
I, I, that's, I'm not, I'm not sure I would. But, that being said, the other issue is, under this license, nobody is allowed to consume on premise.
Correct.
Now, I would assume they're looking for the liquor license for their events and for people to consume on premise. Maybe I'm wrong.
I would...
But if there's consumption on premise, then I don't think that this is the proper liquor license that they are applying for.
Um, that may be. I looked at it innocently as a way for them to sell all the local craft beer that is available. Um, just happens to be one of my favorites. That's what, I, I, I didn't, I, I, I questioned everything about it.
I, I have no concerns about whether this is the proper license and, um, certainly whether they're gonna end up actually being able to comply with the requirements under the license.
Do they, do they need town?
So, here's anyway, here's what happened. So the liquor commission sent the town a notice.
Yeah.
As they do, this entity is applying for liquor license. The town has two weeks to respond back. Okay? If we don't respond, then liquor, there's a presumption that we're fined. I would suggest that we reach out to the, to the liquor commission and, um, and get clarity as to exactly what was applied for and the rationale for it. Because undermine, under the assumption of either the issues that you raised or the potential for consumption on site, I'm not sure that this is the right license for them to be applying for. And, um...
So what license would you, you're talking about?
Well, I would have a problem if somebody is improperly using their liquor license in town.
But that is kind of up to us though, like, we can't, like, anticipate that they're going to not, I mean, if this is what they're agreeing to, is that really like, is it up to us to approve it or not?
No, no, we don't approve it all, no. We have to respond back to the liquor commission. And if we have reservations about the type of application license...
What kind of license are you...
I don't know. I, this is not my area of expertise. But in, in, in discussions with Chris Hutchins, who's area of his expertise, he thinks that there are other licenses that they probably should be applying for.
Uh, more restrictive or less restrictive?
Um, I, I think that allows for consumption on site and doesn't have the, um...
So how could this happen? I, I mean, um...
We just got the notice from the liquor commission.
No, but I, I mean, it's been, and I, I was like... I don't have a problem with what they're doing. I just, when I got that and I looked up the use schedule, and it's not even a special exception, it's, it's a prohibited use. And I know there's, you can get some leeway in there, but this to me just looks like an escalation of something that, that really could end up being a problem if...
I, I, I totally agree with you, that's it.
Okay.
And, and that's why I, I, I think, I think we need to make an inquiry back to the liquor commission about this. Um, and I certainly have concerns. Um, and...
And what I'm saying is though, is that you're basing those concerns on a projection of what you think might happen with the license. Who's in charge of enforcement and determining if this license is going to be given? They, they do have personnel, Chris Hutchins.
Oh, yeah.
They go out and wreck people out.
Absolutely. Um, but more important, they're asking the town whether this makes sense in the context of the town because the liquor commission doesn't know the zoning and the requirements and what these people are actually doing on premises.
Send them a copy of, of our use schedule and, and I, and I, it was a serious question. I don't know if zoning has ever addressed agribusiness. That was something that was coming up before the planning board because you have a lot of these farms that want to expand and, and do more. I just liken it to when Wind Rock was going through their thing with the vineyard and then the wedding venue. And that got, that got mixed pretty...
Because it wasn't a proper use of the zoning.
Right.
Yep.
So, please highlight differences. I, I... Yeah, I'm already in deep. It's, it's a very popular place and I...
No, no, and let's see, I don't have a problem with what they're doing there. I just don't, I, I think it's a real problem if they're operating with the, with the incorrect license and the liquor commission reaches out to us because we're supposed to look at this. And again, we have no problem with it. For example, you know, uh, when Irving went to, to get their liquor license to be able to sell beer at Irving, it complied with all the planning and zoning, they certainly had the, you know, it was a similar license. It was a, it was a combination license.
Yeah.
For beer, beer, wine, tobacco.
Yeah.
Um, it, it complied with the zoning, um, they had the, all the requirements under it. There was zero rationale for the town to...
Oh, it's...
To say anything. This is different. I'm not sure that this applies with our zoning. I'm not sure that, that if, if they intend to consume on site...
I don't, I don't see, just because they sell, um, you know... That's what I'm saying, like, we don't know their intent is going to be to have people...
No, 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 I, I, look, I'm not, I'm not gonna tell the liquor commission what their intent is, but the liquor commission, they don't know these guys from Adam.
Yes. Right, and I guess so that's what, that's what my question is, like, if the Vernons apply under this license, they assume the responsibility and the, excuse me, the constraints of the license, correct? So if we, like, I don't understand the town's role if this is really a liquor commission and from the background knowledge that you're taking, you're assuming that they're going to be serving the property and that's the reason why you don't, don't support this. And what I'm saying is...
No, it's not that I don't support the liquor license. The town has a role here to respond back to the liquor commission if there are questions that we have about this. Correct. We're not telling them to reject it or not reject it. What, what we're gonna say is, you, you probably need to do a little more homework about this because they are consuming on, on site for events. There is outlaw consumption on site for events. Whether it's fine under this or not, but we need to inform them of this and we need to inform them of our existing zoning rules and how this may or may not comply with it.
If there's, if there's consumption on site, how is that allowed in our town?
It's a BYOB. And, uh, again, you're getting beyond my, my, my greatest job. They, their events are currently BYOB. And there's liquor consumption on site.
Oh, yeah, I know, um, but I, did you look at the use schedule? The zoning use schedule?
Yeah.
Isn't this a retail? Isn't this somewhere between retail and store?
At three thousand dollars, yes, I, I tend to think that that is the case.
Okay, so I, I'm just wondering...
Look, to be perfectly honest, we have a planning board meeting coming up on Thursday. I, it may be an issue that they need to think about as well.
Okay, I, it's a, I was under the mistaken, I, I know agriculture was a hot topic at some point, plenty important, but evidently I didn't go beyond that.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it, yeah.
Puffled that up.
Yeah, and, and I, again, I think it's, you gotta find the people who are gonna do the homework and, and spend the time to look at the issue, the agribusiness issue. How does it apply here? What are the rules that we're gonna set up? How do we set up a aggravated, and I, I just think it fell through the cracks.
Well, no, no, I, I was just hoping that there was something there because I, I hate to be the zoning...
Well, we have fourteen days with which to respond back. Um, I'll, um, I, I certainly want to do some more homework on this.
Yeah.
We just started about it today, so, um, we'll go back and forth on this and figure out what, if anything, we need to do in response to the liquor commission request for, uh, for response once. Okay?
So, I was just thinking, in the moment, I could pay a BYOB, BYOB.
No idea, Betsy.
Okay, okay.
Um, I...
Do you want to drink more?
Um, I should drink more at these meetings. Um, yeah, I did, I know that one. Um, well, that's, that's good. Um, so, yeah, so, let's think about that. Are you guys gonna be attending the planning board on Thursday?
I'm going to attend too.
Okay.
I, I can...
That's fine, just to let you know, the, the critical issue for us is gonna be the discussion about, um, who is going to basically maintain compliance with the general permit between planting, water, highways, and the town, or the surrounding town. So that's, the general discussion's gonna take place.